We opened the meeting, the regular meeting of the PBD City Council to be held on Thursday evening, October 11th, 2018 at 7:30. Just like to start off the open meeting law statement, this meeting is being televised live on cable channel nine and being taped by PBD Access TV and also being recorded by our city council sonographer. For a moment of silence, we would like to bring up Deanne Haley. Most, all of us know who Deanne is, but I know there's a lot of people out in their living room may not recognize what this woman has done and is continuing to do in PBD. She is, was the former president of the PBD Chamber of Commerce, a member of the Committee of Education Foundation, an award recipient of the YMC, North Shore Arc recipient of a Partner Award in 2014. She does all the pop-up pubs, she does the concerts, she does the dinners downtown, she does it all, and believe it or not, she's not a resident of PBD. If half the residents did a quarter of what she did, we'd be doing so well. So, I am so proud and honored for her to be here to lead us in the pledge and the moment of silence, and again, just to recognize what this woman has done, and also being a mom of two and a wife, that she donates so much time besides her regular full-time job at the bank. So, we are truly, truly blessed, PBD residents, to have somebody like this working on our behalf. Thank you. So. Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Opening to the continuance of 4A. You don't need to read the application, it's been recessed. If the applicant comes up and tells us, states your name and let us know what you're looking to do.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm John Kelty, I'm an attorney. I have a practice of law at 40 Lowell Street in PBD, Massachusetts. I appear this evening on behalf of Gary Nadal. This is a continued public hearing from your last meeting, in which we had sought a drive-through window for the property at 167 Washington Street here in PBD. It's the site of the former Waterworks Building. You had, this council, different counselors, but this council had issued a special permit some six years ago for the very same use. We were, unfortunately, did lose that particular tenant. We are now pleased to say that we are working in collaboration with Beverly Bank, who wants to open a new institution here in PBD. And we have, this matter was continued from your last meeting due to the lack of comment from the police department. We've been fortunate enough to have the police department review our plan. There was actually a meeting on-site, I think, that your packet includes correspondence from Captain Richards, in which he has indicated that he has reviewed the revised plan that came as a result of that meeting. There's a reference to signage on that plan. We have Representative of the Department, Officer Hawkins, who is here this evening, and can address any issues that may still be outstanding. I have had the opportunity to speak with Counselor McGinn on several occasions. Mister Counselor McGinn has, after review of the plan and seeing comments from Captain Richards, he has suggested some conditions that will be placed on the permit. I would be happy to address those at the appropriate time. We are, in general, very satisfied with those conditions being placed. I'll have a couple of comments. But with that, I think that we're probably in a position where we're ready to go, we're ready to try to have this drive-through window approved, and I'm happy to address with Counselor McGinn the conditions that he has placed on it, or seeks to place on it. Thank you.
First, can I have a motion to accept late communications from Captain Richards? Do you have a late communications on your desk?
Yeah, move to receive.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Attorney Kelty pretty accurately summarized the situation. The inputs from the police department proved to be very valuable and have resulted in a further revision to the proposed plan. This is, as I mentioned before, a high-volume traffic intersection with a fairly complex traffic pattern, while the introduction of another drive-through in that intersection is not ideal. I do think that this plan will minimize any negative impacts. Counselors would note in their package that there's been some concern raised by the PBD Historical Commission about this application. Attorney Kelty mentioned a couple of conditions that are proposed, and pleased that the applicant has indicated a willingness to work with the commission to ensure that the changes to the exterior of the building are done in a historically sensitive manner. The applicant's also agreed to eliminate the current chain-link fencing around the property, introduce some landscaping, and that should significantly enhance the visual appeal of this corner. I will be supporting this application, and with that, I'd open it up to other counselors.
Counselor.
Before doing that, Mr. President, and the suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8D, so moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8E, so moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor, if you'll allow, I should have asked if there was anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor. Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience who would like to be in opposition? Seeing none, counselors? Do I have any counselors who'd like to speak on it? Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question through you to Attorney Kelty. Regarding all the striping and lines and signage that's mentioned in the police recommendation, is that generally handled by a traffic engineer?
We had the opportunity with our engineer to address issues brought up at their meeting that Captain Richards was present at. Available by phone were representatives of the bank, and my client himself was also at that meeting. We are pleased to work with our engineer, who was not purely a traffic engineer, but they weren't so sophisticated so as to, I don't think, you know, call upon a traffic consultant. We have also, we would agree that if there is a concept, when a comprehensive plan is worked out for the striping of the parking lot in conjunction with landscaping, we would share that with, at the police department and seek their approval. We're about 90% there right now, and so we're happy to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, Counselor McGinn.
If Counselor, may I?
You may.
The, did you share your conditions with your colleagues?
I'm about to do that verbally, but you've certainly seen them.
If, I didn't know whether it would be appropriate, there were two matters of clarification, so I didn't know if you wanted to suggest what the conditions are, and I could comment. I'm in agreement, but for instance, one of them is that we, upon receipt and approval of proper authorizations from the Department of Public Services, road markings required to establish the left-turning lane on Foster Street depicted on the plan shall be installed and maintained by the applicant. My client has no objection, because he did this with respect to that island six years ago. So, we have no objection to hiring a company to go out and do the striping once it's been approved by the police department, but the future maintenance in a public way of that striping, I think, is not an issue for my client as an ongoing responsibility. That was one issue, and so that was the only language change that I was hoping we'd get rid of the duty to maintain. And the other was, we have no problem at all sending our window spec sheet to Community Development Department and to the Historic Commission, so that they can see the windows that are being replaced and the type and style of window, but I didn't necessarily, there isn't really a jurisdictional issue, we're not demolishing the building. I don't have any objection to sharing the type and design, and if the commission wants to suggest that the windows should be otherwise, but I didn't necessarily want to have to appear before the commission for that approval. Says input.
That's correct. I think the language is sufficiently open, that it's not requiring any kind of strict approval, it's requiring that you seek their input, and I think that's appropriate, given the concerns that they've raised. And I think that you raise a valid point with respect to the ongoing maintenance of the striping, so I'd be happy to remove that language. Thank you, Mr. President. With that, I would move to approve the application from Gary A. Nadal, 69 North Shore Road, New Dorve, New Hampshire, for a special permit seeking to develop a drive-through window for a financial institution at 167 Washington Street, PBD, Mass. As filed in accordance with Section 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance with the following conditions.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Any opposed? All in favor? Thank you.
And thank you for that administrative correction, Mr. President. I'm going to pick up with the reading of that motion, with the following conditions. Number one, drive-through and associated site changes shall be in accordance with the plan submitted on October 4th, 2018. In accordance with the plan, the drive-through will be established and maintained in an exterior portion of the building and the rear of the building, such that any impact on the exterior historical integrity of the building is minimized. Number two, upon receipt of approval and proper authorizations from the Department of Public Services, road markings required to establish the left-turning lane on Foster Street depicted on the plan shall be installed by the applicant. Number three, a comprehensive site striping and signage plan shall be submitted to the police department for review, and police department approval of such plans shall be required. Number four, the chain-link fence surrounding the property shall be removed and landscaping shall be established. The applicant shall seek input from Community Development Department on the proposed landscaping plan. And number five, the applicant shall seek input from the PBD Historical Commission regarding all changes to the exterior facade of the building, including but not limited to windows and signage. For the avoidance of doubt, all exterior renovations to the building and all signs shall comply with the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD and shall be carried out in a manner consistent with the City of PBD's downtown design standards for the Foster/Walnut Street sub-district. So moved.
You heard the motion? Roll call.
Counselors McGinn.
Yes.
Gould. Saslaw.
Yes.
Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozagnol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Sharrest.
Yes.
Motion carries, 10-0.
Thank you, counselors.
To the petitioner, thank you very much for being very patient and understanding. We appreciate it. Like to move to 4B. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, October 11th, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from 16 Robin LLC, James A. Cavalieri, Manager, 16 Robin Street, Everett, Mass., for a special permit seeking to allow an office and shop for contractors, et cetera, with outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment, with six-foot-high fence surrounding storage yard, and limited service and repair of vehicles owned by the applicant indoors at Zero Tremont Street, formerly known as 45 Tremont Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Section 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council, Council President Edward "Ash" Sharrest.
The petitioner, please state your name and what you're looking to do.
Good evening, counsel. My name is John Kelty, I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in PBD, Massachusetts. I appear this evening on behalf of 16 Robin LLC, company which is 35 years in business as contracting largely excavation and infrastructure installation. Thirty-five years in that business and outside this community. They also have a yard in Everett, Mass., in which they will continue to operate a small portion of their business, but this is going to be their, if you will, kind of showcase office, office and their showcase facility. They will, we filed this on or about August 28th. We are here this evening for this special permit. We have had the opportunity to develop a site plan that the Cavaliers who are here this evening with me have approved. We will, we are asking that we grant, that the city council grant the special permit for the use of this property as the office and shop of contractor. If you look closely at the plan, you'll see that the fence surrounds the entire premises from the front of the building where the landscape shows, extending all the way to the rear of the premises. Any of the vehicles being, and equipment being used on the site will be stored at the rear of the premises. The landscaping that we have provided will support, will face Tremont Street, and the rest of the property will be contained within the fenced-in area. My client will maintain the yard in a clean fashion. The yard in Everett will continue to be operational. The yard in Everett will be for storage of gravel, sand, materials of that type, materials that have been taken from a site and need to be perhaps crushed, sifted, things like that. That'll all take place off this premises. There'll be approximately eight parties on this premises on a daily basis. They will consist of people that are working up bids. This company is a large enough company that it has 35 employees, and they bid on some very large jobs around the Commonwealth and elsewhere. And the people that are on the premises are billing, bookkeeping, and the parties that will be project managers bidding, bidding on, putting together proposals. There would be two mechanics on-site who all, any maintenance or repair to any of the vehicles will occur within the premises. And with that, I think we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. We've recited hours of operation, which are 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, no Sundays. The actual 6:00 AM hour, there were a couple of people in the office at that early hour, but in general, the 6:00 AM is kind of startup time to take the vehicles elsewhere, to start the truck and take it off the premises. And we have also recited that, we have said that there would be about 10 vehicles parked on the, on the site at any given time. Those are personal vehicles. There will be also other equipments that would be stored on the site, some of which would be used on a daily basis, much of which might only be used on a weekly basis. And we're happy to, we're happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience speak in favor? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none, Counselor Mitsoulas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start off by looking at what the Health Department had asked about, and then we could go to Public Services. They made comments here, and I know that all these issues have to be addressed before they're allowed to use that property anyways, but I just want, because it came to us, I want the counselor to address these issues and tell us where we are, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Counselor. In my package, the first commentary was from the Health Department, and it's a somewhat benign, if you will, commentary in which we're happy to comply. It does say that during construction, we've got to have all the road and control issues addressed, we must provide a plan, which is really required of any new construction, and we're happy to comply with that. It also suggests that we should, we should build any bays that are being utilized for repair, that they should be all in accordance with the proper ventilation, et cetera, and we're happy to comply with, with that. I have a commentary from Public Services. Public Services has seen this plan, not this particular plan, they most recently reviewed for Conservation Commission, and they reviewed for the site plan approval that we obtained for the building, which is out front. The out-front lot has been purchased by Ahmad Farhat. Mr. Farhat is here this evening, he is supportive of the development of the rear lot. He has, and we are addressing every issue in that public, in the Planning Board commentaries dated September 6th. When we seek site plan approval from the Planning Board and Construction Review Committee, we will have addressed every single one of these issues. That plan is drawn, Mr. Cavalieri has approved it. It's being printed on this weekend, and we're submitting that to the Planning Board for their review and to the Construction Review Committee for their review, but I can tell you with assurance that the issues have, that have been raised by the Department of Public Services were raised at our last site plan review, and they were commentaries that, much of which were triggered by the Department of Public Services' request for us to install a newer, bigger sewer on the premises, which runs on the east, west-of-the-side of the property. That is in the ground, it has been installed. Sewer, sewer is completely installed and tied in to the lower portion of the property where it connects with Webster Street, and the sewer and water stubs, water stubs, utility stubs have all been brought to this piece of property. And Mister, the owner of the property is not building this building, it's going to be built by contractors for the Cavaliers, and they have seen the plan that will be submitted to the Construction Review Committee and to the Planning Board, and we're happy to comply with those desires. We have a fire department response, and we're happy to, building is not yet constructed. All applicant code requirements shall be met prior to taking occupancy, and that's an architectural issue which we're happy to comply with. And I think those were the three commentaries that we received.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Kelly, Kelty. Well, that's the technical part of the special permit, and all of these issues have to be addressed before they get any type of occupancy permit. So, let's get to the special permit itself, what we're here to give out. First, let me take you back to the property itself. You all know I go back to this property many years, I grew up in the neighborhood. That's, that was an old tannery site, and it was abandoned for years, and it came back to life, and, and Webster Street Industrial Park right now is full to capacity, so they're doing pretty great, which tells me that there's room for businesses there. One of the things I want to ask you, Counselor, and this concerns me, because I know what they did there, and I know the chemical spills that were on that property. Now, that property is totally and completely clean, am I correct?
Yes, we had engaged the services of Weston and Sampson. They have studied the property, they have done all the appropriate number of test pits. We were able to participate in the brownfields money that has been available to PBD in Salem. We've worked with Brendan Callahan and with Tom Devine in the city Salem. We were granted money to clean up the site, and Weston and Sampson is actually in the process of drafting the AUL, which is Alternative Use Limitation, and we're ready to, we have our compliance plan in the works, and yes, I can say that it's clean.
Okay. Counsel, I'm very happy to hear that, Counsel, because there are other businesses that will be going in there also, and for the public safety and any new businesses that go in there, I just never thought I'd see that, because of what went on there years ago. So, to see that area clean is, is a good feeling. I met the owner about 15 minutes ago with Counselor Kelty, and he told me the type of business he was in, and I'm very familiar with the construction business. You know, my family were painters, we knew what contractors did, and what he was looking to use it for sounded to me almost like a satellite part of his business. His bigger business is in Everett, and that's where he does, he stores all his gravel and hot top and anything that has to do with construction. I'll say the dirty end of it, any hazardous waste or anything will not be coming into this site. This site here is, he's looking for, this is where his people go out and find the work. He's looking to have his office there to go out and bid the jobs, but he also needs an area where he could store some of his equipment to be local, so he can get to the jobs. The perimeter of his property is going to be fenced in, it's going to be 10-foot-high fence, there will be no work done on that property. Everything will be, everything that is stored, except a couple of small items, which I think you could tell me, Mr. Kelty, but there isn't going to be any mounds of dirt there stored or gravel or cement or, and any, and the vehicles have, will have easy access in and out of the property. There will be no parking his vehicles on Tremont Street for the people who live on Tremont Street to worry about losing parking spaces, that's not going to happen. His, his property is exclusive for his own vehicles, and any work that is done on that site, I'm talking the vehicles, will be done inside and not outside, so I'm pretty supportive of this, I don't see how it cannot be. And I also understand, and counselors, And I also understand, and Counselors, I'm kind of telling you this because Counselor Kel, Kelty didn't tell you, but he told, someone told me that he's on a 1031 exchange, which means that he sold a piece of property to buy this property, and he has a certain amount of time to purchase this property, which is, it's running out, and it's very, you could tell him that, Jack, if you want.
It's, we're obligated to close on this property. The Cavallaries are obligated to close on this property before year's end.
Okay. So the reason I'm saying that is I'm not rushing this. I just don't want to stall it to the point they have a problem with their 1031E.
You had said it was a 10-foot fence. I believe it's six foot is what the requirement is by the, in the zoning ordinance. And yes, you're correct that there'd be no storage of any kind of materials taken from another site, and there'd be no storage of anything not utilized on this site with respect to materials, materials.
Counselors, I think I've asked my questions.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Kelty. Jack, the proposed building we're talking about is the one in the center of this map with 12,000 square foot?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Can you tell me, I didn't catch it, and I apologize, what is the proposed two-story building on the map to the left? What is?
Actually, Mr. Farhat's building, he has purchased it. He said that they're hopeful of having their building permit issued within the next, within the month. He has been working with Deer Hill Architects. He's got his whole building designed. Principal tenant is Mr. Farhat's convenience store, which he has one up at, he's Centennial Express up on First Ave. It used to be A+ down on the corner of Central and, Central and Warren Street, and he has since closed that facility. He's going to open another, a portion of this building will be devoted to his convenience store, and then he would have other tenants that would be sort of ancillary and helpful to the neighborhood and likely do, will not require special permits.
And Jack, what is the, the other proposed building, the 2,200 square foot?
That is, we don't have a user for that. I believe that we do have a party that is going to buy it, and it will be used principally for office space. So at the time, we, we don't have a user. And actually, when we do, that building will also trigger its own site plan review in terms of, because it'll, it'll be in excess of the square footage that will require further review.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Any other Counselors? Seeing and hearing, Counselor Sasslaw. After that, Counsel Turco.
I just had one question on the, on the application, item number six, state use for which the special permit is sought. It said, "In limited service and repair of vehicles owned by applicant indoors." What does limited service and repair of vehicles mean as opposed to?
It's not open to the public. It'd be only his, his vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I should have a few questions. I'm trying to figure out the, the access and egress out of here, and I see at the southern corner of the map, you have a, an, what looks like an exit out to Webster Street, but then says emergency access gate. So is that open for Mr. Cavallari's construction equipment to exit out that way?
No.
Okay. So the only exit would be out onto Tremont Street for all of this entire, all three buildings would exit out onto Tremont Street?
Correct.
One egress?
Yep.
And I, I would imagine, I mean, I know the, I know the company originally in Everett, and they have some large equipment. If you're going to transfer a front unload or a backhoe to a job site, it's going to be on a flatbed, which is tractor-trailer. And I just wonder if, you know, if, is Tremont Street able to accommodate this type of truck traffic? I know that there's significant traffic there already, and I'll leave that out for the council to, to think to themselves. But my other question is, this, this area of land to the right of the 12,000-square-foot building, which seems to be an unmarked area of land, is that paved land?
Yes, that's paved, and that'll be, that's where any vehicles that are on the site, that's the fenced-in area that they would be located in. Correct.
Right. And that brings up my, my other concern. I mean, with, believe me, I'm so, I'm very happy to see this, this site cleaned up, and I'm, you all know that I have a similar type site in Ward 1 that I may face this, these same issues with. But with construction equipment, and most of you know I, I'm a heavy equipment operator, not any longer, but I was for many years, and I know construction equipment historically leaks hydraulic fluid, hydraulic oils, and I just don't want to see the same thing happen to this site that's, that happened in the past. And then, you know, as Counsel Sasslaw brought up, light equipment repairs, although not open to the, to the public, this is heavy equipment. You're talking, you know, 50-gallon drums of hydraulic, you're talking oil, grease, lube, everything on site here. I mean, so, and then we have Mr. Farhat's property in the, in the front, which, for those of you that don't know him, is the proprietor at Centennial Crossing on First Ave, who runs an excellent establishment, and I just wonder how this mixes together. But with that, I guess I really, other than the exit, and I just wanted to make it clear that all of this traffic for all three of these buildings exits out one spot, tractor-trailers, passengers, customers, whatever the third building may be. And I just wonder if this is a very, very good idea to have all of this mixed together. But with that, thank you.
And Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Kelty. The application indicated that Conservation Commission approval wasn't required, and I'm assuming that's as a function of the special permit, but it most certainly had to have been required for the site. Is that, you, you mentioned, you mentioned the?
Yes. We have an order of conditions that pertains to this property, and we would be filing this plan with the Conservation Commission in addition to what we've already been required to do. We would be filing, providing notice that the, that this use is going to be contained in the back portion of the property. All of the issues with respect to our order of conditions dealt with cleanup, the maintenance of the brook that runs through there, what we were going to do with respect to, that's the Lawrence Brook, and what we were going to do with respect to shoring up the sides. There's two places where the Lawrence Brook used to be open. There will only be one section of it that'll be open now. The rest of it'll all be covered. We have to do, we had to have our methodology with respect to shoring up the walls of the kind of open culvert that carries the water through the property, and those have all been vetted with the Conservation Commission, and we have an order of conditions.
Thank you. So you have the order of conditions, so submission of this information is, is a function of that order of conditions. Is that, okay. And have you, has it also been evaluated as to whether or not this is subject to surface and groundwater protection? Section 6.9 of zoning. That's a, that's a permit, I believe you've been before us before, for other properties where, where permits required from this, where the permit granting authority for, in, under those conditions. So has, has that been evaluated?
Yes. And it was, we were filing under the Rivers Act with the Conservation Commission, but we were not in a surface and groundwater protection district.
So not applicable, this site isn't, that, that, that section of zoning you're saying is not applicable to, in this instance? You mentioned earlier, Attorney Kelty, that the storage was going to be limited to materials that are used on the site. Where is that established? Where, where is it established that there's going to be limited storage? You had said they weren't going to be bringing materials from other locations, I think. Did I understand that correctly?
That's what I said, and where is, I don't understand the question, where is it established?
Are you saying that's just a policy of the company? That's their intent, or?
That's their intent, but we would certainly take a condition.
Is that part of your order of conditions from the Conservation Commission not to bring additional materials onto the site? Or where, where is, is that a, is that a current restriction, or is that just the intent of the?
It's not a current restriction, although we never, we would have to amend our order of conditions if we were intending to bring properties, property, I mean, materials that were not indigenous to this site, but instead some borrow from, you know, a fill site that we would bring to this, we'd have to go back to the commission. We don't have any authority to do that under the order of conditions that we've been granted, and that's not what the company wants to use the land for. They have that facility in Everett in which they're allowed to do that.
So effectively, the order of conditions does limit, does, does create that limitation of bringing other materials on site?
Say that's a fair statement, but I would certainly allow a, entertain a condition to our special permit that said that as well.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Ozno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along the lines of Counselor Turco's questions, how many construction vehicles are we looking at on-site at any given time? Maximum number?
Maximum vehicles of all sizes, which would be about 30, including compressors, including the flatbed. They have in their employ, they have six dump trucks. They don't have any 18-wheelers. They don't have any of the elongated dump, dump vehicles. They have excavators that would need to be filled, placed on that flatbed. Part of the early, early hour is to get the property to not be in that morning rush, not be down, down on Tremont and Central at 8:00, 9:00 in the morning when traffic is thickest, and not every vehicle is used every day. It's on an as-needed basis, and some of the equipment stays off the site on certain jobs, such as the compressors, and, and they may remain on a job site.
Thank you. One other question, just looking at the way the curb cut is designed. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Tremont Street comes towards Peabody, towards the bottom end of the plans, and Salem would be towards the top end of the plans. Is that correct? Okay. So coming out of the property, the way the curb cut looks, and maybe it's just the way it is designed, almost every vehicle would kind of have to take a left onto Tremont to get out of the complex. Correct? Heavier equipment is what I mean.
It's, it's not intentionally biased in that sense because of this use, but you're correct that, given the grade and the location on where it intersects, yeah, there is a slight bias. In speaking with Mr. Cavallari, he was suggesting that the only turn that he's somewhat concerned about, he suggested was the turn onto 114, and we explained to him, he, he can't go on 114 up in Wilson Square, so. And that's not 114 out on Central Street.
Correct. Is there any way that we could change the curb cut so taking a right would be a little bit more amendable for a larger vehicle?
I don't think that there's, yeah, I don't think there's any restraint with respect to this property that, that would prohibit that.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, to Counselor Masoulis. That might maybe be one order of condition that you may want to add on to this proposed special permit, is just increasing the curb cut so you can, and exit vehicles onto Tremont a little bit easier for heavy equipment.
You okay with Counselor Masoulis? You got that? Counselor Turco? I'm sorry, Counselor Ozno, you'll say?
Thank you.
Counselor Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I forgot to ask one question. Jack, earlier in your presentation, you had said that Public Services saw this plan, and then you said, "Well, not this plan, a previous plan." So Public Services hasn't seen this particular plan, and I guess I'm asking that because of the curb cut issue, has Public Services actually, do they know that this is a construction company coming back here, number one? And number two, does the Peabody Police Department know? Because I know when I dealt with the building on Jubilee Drive, the police department actually dictated how the curb cuts were so that tractor-trailers weren't exiting or vehicles weren't exiting onto the wrong side of the street due to the curb cut restraints. So I just want to make sure that this was properly vetted by those, those two agencies.
I would suggest, yes, the curb cut has been reviewed in the past, but not necessarily in conjunction with this particular use. The curb cut has never changed. However, I think it would be very appropriate to say in a permit granted by this body that at the time of construction review and site plan review, that the Peabody Police and Public Services Department look at the curb cut and scrutinize it as to its appropriateness. Mr. Cavallari has seen it, and he sometimes operates some of that equipment, and he felt that the curb cut was, you know, very usable, very doable. He's asked for no changes to it, but I think that that kind of a condition would be more than appropriate.
Counselor Turco, you'll say?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other Counselors? Counselor Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Kelty, you said 6:00, 6:00 AM would be, are there any other restrictions that you're aware of in the area, or even with Counselor Masoulis, to any of the other industrial operators on what time they can enter and exit their facility using their particular equipment? The only reason I bring it up is that, you know, that is an industrial area. There's a lot of, there's uses there, and with the heavy equipment, is it consistent with the other operations that are going on within that area? I couldn't find any, but I'm just curious.
Well, excuse me, it's, it's an industrial park, you know. I like to walk in and tell the industrial park, "You start at 5:00 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning," or whatever. They work all night long if they want to, and we can't tell them not to. They're in, you have a seven-story building there that there's people working in there at night, you know? Can we tell them? I don't know. Do you want to tell them? Do you want to tell the industrial park, "You can't work after 12 at night, or you can't work after 5:00?" You know, I, I, I've always been uncomfortable telling companies what their hours of operation should be, but I do understand, you know, they have residents living near them. But to tell an industrial park, you know, especially when the industrial park really was created 100 years ago, and they were working 24 hours a day. Same with Pulaski Street. Do we go in and tell the people at Pulaski Street, you know, that you can't come in until 7:00 in the morning? Are we going to go to Centennial Park and tell people there that you can only work at certain hours? You know? I'm very uncomfortable with it, but you know what? I'm on this council, and if that's what you want, I'll put that on there.
Through you, Mr. President. I wasn't exactly, I wasn't looking for that condition. I was more asking if this conforms with the other activities going on within the park. The reason I bring it up is it's going to be a new structure. This is going to be new to the area. I'm, I'm in favor of upgrading this particular area. It is going to be driving, the driveway does go directly into, towards people's homes, and I was just wanting to ensure that, you know, 6:00 in the morning when they have new trucks coming when they have new trucks coming down, that they're comfortable with that. I think that this is the kind of give-and-take that comes with certain types of new industry coming in to clean up what was a distressed property. So essentially, I was just seeing... Counselor, I know you have quite a bit of history in the area. You regale us quite often, so I just wanted to see if that was consistent with the typical operations in your area, especially within your ward. So essentially, that's what I'm looking, not to add any extra conditions, but just to ensure that we are operating within that standard. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any other counselors?
Yeah, counselors.
Counselor Mazzulis.
Listen, I'm on this council, and whatever your wish is, you know, I will go along with it. I'm not hard to get along with. When you're a ward counselor, okay, which John is, my friend here is, Don McGinn is, we're told things that we're uncomfortable doing, and we do them, okay? We have... We could say, "Don't open up that industrial park till 8:00 in the morning." Let me tell you something, there's going to be people telling you, "That's too early." Okay? So we can't win, all right? So sometimes, we've got to just take the hit ourselves and say, "Hey, look, this is what it is. It's an industrial park. It puts people to work. The type of business this gentleman is in, they get up 7:00 in the morning to go to work. Their workers meet them at 6:00. What are you going to tell them? You can't go for..." And let me tell you something, the type of work that this gentleman does, this Mr. Cavallari, half my neighborhood does that work. I think he's going to be hiring half my neighborhood. It's all construction work. That's what the Portuguese people do. Most of them are good at it. That's how they make a living. I welcome Mr. Cavallari there, and I bet the neighborhood will too, when they realize that a lot of them will probably get a job with him. You know, so I... Counselors, anybody want to put any restrictions on this? You just put them on, and I don't have a problem with it, okay? So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Any other counselors? I did have one statement, Counselor Mazzulis, and it's kind of the flip side of what Counselor Melville was going in, and something that Counselor Turco has talked about. You know your ward. We know that. You know that ward, you know that street. And looking at the size of the street and some of the equipment that's going to be going in and out of there, would we want to, or would you want to, and I know you said you put any restriction on, that this... The larger equipment, the trailers with the flatbeds with the front-end loaders on, would not be able to travel on that road between 8:00 and 9:00 when the school just down the street is in operation, and the traffic is that heavy? Do you feel comfortable saying that the vehicles need to be out by 8:00 and not back in between 2:00 and 4:00 when the schools and traffic is heavy, or even 5:00? Have a certain timeframe that will be more realistic because of the heavy travel road? You know how busy Tremont gets, so I'm going to leave that motion to you.
Let me answer that. Webster Street Industrial Park, okay, has those vehicles and bigger ones that come in all day long, and you don't even hear about it. You know what I'm saying? They have vehicles that are as long as this building, pulling in and unloading building material, truckloads of it. They have double... Those double... What you call them there? The two boxes attached together.
The tandem... They can't... The tandem trucks can't go through the city anyways. Tandem trucks can't go down the roadway. They're illegal into the city limits, right? I believe.
They get there, don't they? They unload their vehicles there.
I could be wrong, but I thought tandem trucks are not allowed within the city. Again, Counselor, I'm just putting it out there like Counselor Melville did. You know your ward, you know your streets. I think we wouldn't be doing our jobs if we didn't mention it to you and have it corrected by you.
Counselor, and I totally welcome your questions, and I totally welcome you put any restriction you want on this permit. That's your right, and please do it.
Any other counselors? Hearing and seeing none, Counselor Mazzulis.
Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Mazzulis?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, a special permit for James A. Cavallari, manager, 45 Tremont Street, to allow an office and shop for contractors and so on with outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment with six-foot-high fence surrounding the storage yard and limited service and repair of vehicles owned by the applicant indoors. Mr. Chairman, if anybody would like to put a restriction on top of that, please join me. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Turco?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only request I would have for a condition would be that the egress is reviewed under construction review by both PBD Police Department and Public Services. And if... Calling, if you could send that to Captain Richards and Mr. La Bossiere, I'd appreciate it, and if... In the fire department for egress of large heavy equipment. Thank you.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this was alluded to by Counselor Mazzulis, but that the condition would be that there be full compliance with the inputs of the Health Department and Department of Public Services.
Any other counselors? Counselor Mazzulis?
So moved, yeah. Thank you, Counselor McGinn.
Roll call on the motion.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozagno.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Sharest.
Yes.
Motion carries 11-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, counselors, and have a nice evening.
You too. Move to 4C. Will the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Pevody, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, October 11, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Pevody, Mass., on the application from That Taste is Profound LLC, 123 Main Street, North Andover, Mass., for a special permit seeking to operate a retail bakery at 229 C Andover Street, Pevody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Pevody zoning ordinance. Pevody City Council, Counselor Edward Asharast, Council President.
Would the petitioner please state your name and address for the record and what you'd like to do?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Feresta. I'm here representing That Taste is Profound. We're seeking a special use permit to operate a retail bakery at 229 C Andover Street, Pevody, Massachusetts. The... This plaza, you might be familiar with, has the Walgreens and the Kidova. There's also a medical facility next to the Walgreens. We would be in the space in between those... In between the medical facility and the Kidova. This concept is new to Massachusetts. It is a franchise called Nothing Bunt Cakes. This is a popular franchise mostly in the West and in the South, and moving into the New England area. This will be one of the first Nothing Bunt Cakes to open in the state of Massachusetts. There's also going to be one in Newton and one in Burlington coming very soon. So, yeah, so we're here to apply for our special use permit. What Nothing Bunt Cakes is, is just that, nothing bunt cakes, all different sizes. The cakes can be crafted for special occasions. It's sort of a high-end product in the way that it looks, but not high-end in the cost of the bunt cake. So very visually appealing. And what got us interested into it, my wife and I as franchisees, is just heard so many stories from people across the country who are passionate about these bunt cakes. I mean, I've heard stories of people who will drive hours to get one of these bunt cakes, so we're excited to bring That Taste to your local area. I don't know what else to say. If you have questions, we're certainly more than happy to answer.
Does anyone in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, Counselor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the only question I'm going to have for you are your hours of operation.
Okay. Yes, so the hours of operation will be from 9:00 to 7:00, Monday through Saturday, closed on Sunday.
Closed Sunday, okay. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm very familiar with that property. There was... That was an old yogurt shop there, previous, so they really don't have to change the... Change anything in there. All he's got to do is just move in and operate, so I really don't have any further questions. The use is there, and I think it's a perfect business for that use.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could, if, say, business takes off, and you're limited to not opening on Sundays, all those stores are open on Sundays, would you... No, your permit is not going to allow you to unless you decide... You go... My suggestion is you go for the seven days and then decide discretionary whether you open or not on Sundays.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
You just don't want to hurt yourself.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that sounds reasonable. I just was telling you what our...
What your hours of operation would be.
But, yeah, certainly, if we could have the option, I would definitely...
If that's okay, Counselor Mazzulis? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ozinol.
Just a motion to receive late communication regarding this matter.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Is that a Counselor Ozinol? Any other counselors? Counselor Saslaw.
So I just looked at your webpage and gained about 1,000 calories, but it looks good. Assuming you get approval today, which I'm sure you will, timeframe when you'd be open?
We would be hoping to be open by January 1. We would have loved to made it before the holidays, because that's a really big time for this business, but I don't think we're going to quite make it, but, you know, next year.
Thank you. Good luck.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the applicant. I just wanted to make sure that you had seen the inputs from the Health Department.
Yes, yes. Counselor Mazzulis went over everything with me, and we will be in full compliance with those recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other counselors? I just had one question. Are you doing any wholesaling out of the business too, or strictly retail?
Yeah, strictly retail, yes.
Well, from one baker to our next. I know it's very, very long and busy hours, and certainly around the holidays, I guess you're going to have a time to rest up before you open up in January.
Right, exactly.
But again, I can appreciate that type of business coming around here, and good luck, and look forward to tasting. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Counselor Mazzulis.
Yeah, motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit for That Taste is Profound LLC, 229 C Andover Street, for the purpose of operating a retail bakery, with the hours of operation being 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week, Monday through Sunday. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, through you to Counselor Mazzulis. Would you be agreeable to just also adding that there be full compliance to the inputs of the Health Department?
You just did, Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Roll call.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozagno.
Yes.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Sharest.
Yes.
Motion carries 11-0.
Thank you. Good luck, and we have all these new bakeries opening up in the city. Maybe we have a ward turf competition. I know Counselor Turco had one recently, and now I'm a Counselor Mazzulis, and I think Counselor McGinn may be having one in his neighborhood, so thank you. Counsel... 4D, would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Pevody, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, October 11, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Pevody, Mass., on the application of Drew Donarumo Plumbing and Heating, Inc., 22 Rear Stevens Street, Pevody, Mass., for a special permit seeking to allow a plumbing and heating business and to use the second-floor space as one residential apartment at said 22 Rear Stevens Street, Pevody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Pevody zoning ordinance. Pevody City Council, Counselor Edward Sharest, City Council President.
Hello. Petitioner, will you please state your name and address and what you're looking to do?
Good evening, for the record. My name's Ethan Von Zalitis. I'm an attorney-client lawyer, 246 Andover Street in Pevody. Here on behalf of the petitioner with respect to his application, and with me this evening is Mr. Drew Donarumo, who's the principal owner of the business. As I stated in the application, Mr. Donarumo is the owner of a plumbing and heating business. He's currently situated in the city of Chelsea. He's owned this business and operated it now for a little over 33 years. The majority of his work and his clientele is more in the Boston area. However, he's been getting more and more business in the North Shore area, and as a result, he'd like to create a satellite location here in the city of Pevody. He currently has the property at 22 Stevens Street under a purchase and sales agreement. Obviously, his obligation to purchase is contingent upon getting this evening's permit. Our property contains a two-story commercial building. I believe it contains approximately 6,000 square feet, and it's situated on a lot that contains roughly 6,000 square feet. Our property is situated in a residential district. It's in the R2 district, although it's traditionally been used for commercial purposes as a legally existing nonconforming use. The property has been given special permits in the past to alter that use. I believe the last permit that was issued was by this counsel was in 2016, and that was to allow the property to be used as a heating and air conditioning business. The petitioner's business is basically identical, or very similar, to that use that was approved in 2016. Rather than a heating and air conditioning business, his will be a plumbing and heating business. If granted the permit, he'll complete the renovation to the ground floor of that building, and he'll use that for the storage of his equipment, his inventory. He'll create some office space along with a bathroom. The second floor, and that contains about 1,000 square feet, he would like to convert that into one two-bedroom apartment rather than using it for commercial purposes. Mr. Donarumo's son, Matt, he's part of the business. He's young. He'd like to be able to live in this apartment, to get the business up and running, to oversee things, and basically, he'd have a place to live until it's time for him to move on and to buy his own home. Due to the nature of the petitioner's business, 95% of the work is performed off-site. There's certainly no need for customers to be coming and going from the property. There's obviously... The nature of the business doesn't require a... There's obviously, the nature of the business doesn't require a constant travel to and from this property by his employees. The only time the employees are going to be coming is when we have a job in the surrounding North Shore area, and it's needed to pick up either any, any inventory or equipment. The petitioner has seven employees, he has five service vans. Being a satellite location, we don't believe we'd ever have more than four or five of these service vans stored at the property, since their primary place of business is in Chelsea, where they like to keep their vehicles, and many times their employees bring the vehicle home with them at the end of the day. In addition, Mr. Donarumo will certainly has no objections to accepting all the conditions that this council had incorporated in their permit of 2016, and I believe I had submitted a copy with our application. In essence, the character of his, his use is very similar to the previously approved use, except the second floor would be residential use rather than a commercial. As I stated earlier, I have Drew here with me this evening, and together we'll try to answer any questions the Counselor may have. Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience in favor? Anyone opposed? Hearing, seeing none, Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Von Zalitis said this is a very similar use to the last permitted use at this property, except that this includes a residential unit above. However, this is a residential street, and the addition of that apartment on the second floor has not raised any concerns with the Butters. And his attorney, Von Zalitis, mentioned the current plan is for Mr. Donarumo's son to live in that apartment. Spoken to the director Butters, the applicant, the petitioner's attorney, the most significant issue that was raised was with respect to snow removal along the private way, that, and that's been addressed by Mr. Donarumo's commitment to plow that way, he owns a plow, and is very willing to take care of that. As indicated in the application, the petitioner, and is restated tonight by Attorney Von Zalitis, the petitioner's agreed to the conditions of the 2016 special permit, and as such, I am supportive of this application, and welcome comments from other counselors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other counselors? Counselor Gould.
Thank you, through you to Counselor Von Zalitis. Ethan, is this the old Eminem door and window building? Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors? I had one question. Is the apartment ups, above, is a one, one-bedroom?
One-two bedroom.
One-two bedroom. And to the petitioner, is this the way you get your son out of the house, you buy a building with an apartment above it? Because I, I want to really kind of think about that. Thank you.
Or maybe he wants to get away from his parents.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the application from Drew Donarumo Plumbing and Heating Incorporated, 22 R. Stevens Street, Peabody, Mass., for a special permit seeking to allow an office and shop of a plumbing and heating business, and to use the second floor space as one residential apartment at said 22 R. Stevens Street, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Section 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance, with the following conditions, that all the conditions of the special permit, 2016 number four, shall apply to this special permit, except that, condition one, shall state that the specific type of office and shop be that of a plumbing and heating contractor. Condition four, state that the number of vehicles stored on the premises outside normal operations, operating hours not exceed five vehicles, and condition ten, state that construction hours of operation shall be in accordance with the ordinance of the city of Peabody. So moved.
You heard the motion. Roll call and a motion.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Missouls.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
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 Melville.
[laughing]
Gravel.
Yes.
Shearest.
Yes.
Motion carries, eleven zero.
Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Congratulations, and son, don't be late on your rent, okay? Four C, excuse me, four E, Counselor Missouls is-
That is continued to December 13th, Mr. Chairman. So moved.
Thank you.
Motion received, late communication regarding that matter.
Heard the motion on the late communication, all, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Move to reports of committee. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Legal Affairs Committee met earlier this evening. Present at the meeting were Counselors Gravel, Counselors Missouls, O'Neil, and Counselor Turco sat in for Counselor Gould and myself as chairman, also present were Counselors Charis, Gould, Counselor Manning Martin, Counselor Melville, and Counselor Rozignol. There were two items on the agenda. We actually took them out of order, and I will take them out of order here. The first was an agreement to enter a civil lawsuit with the Massachusetts opioid litigation's attorneys consortium. We were addressed by Attorney Richard Sandman, who is representing Peabody in this matter, and he indicated to us that the Massachusetts opioid litigation's attorneys consortium filed a lawsuit on July 5th, 2018, on behalf of the city of Peabody against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids as a result of their negligence, misrepresentation, unfair marketing, and unlawful distribution. He, the complaint is available to anybody that would like to see it, it's in excess of three hundred pages. The complaint was transferred to a multi-district litigation court in Ohio responsible for the coordination and streamlining of all opioid-related lawsuits nationwide until such time as there is a settlement or a case is returned to Massachusetts for full trial. There are over a thousand similar lawsuits that have been filed across the country. Judge Dan Polster, the judge overseeing the coordination of all these cases, has assigned three Ohio cases for trial in March. These cases are being extensively worked up for trial. The information and documents obtained through discovery of these three cases will benefit Peabody and the other plaintiffs in their lawsuits, as these cases will also serve as bellwethers to determine the most effective strategy and most desirable theories of liability to pursue at trial. Simultaneously, representatives from the plaintiff and dependents have been active in settlement negotiations and in attempt to resolve all of the cases, cases nationwide. Although there are early positive signs in these negotiations, it is still far too early to provide any additional information. In the near future, Mr. Attorney Sandman's firm will contact the city regarding the one open action, which is the completion of the government plaintiff fact sheet, which all cities require to complete, and that activity should take place prior to December of this That's basically an overview of what we were told, Mr. President, and there is no action required by the council at this time, as Peabody is already a plaintiff in this matter, so that is a report of progress. The second matter before the Legal Affairs Committee this evening was a petition from Stony Brook Condominium Trust requesting the recognition of a 20 mile an hour speed limit for all private ways within Stony Brook Condominium property. There were a number of questions that were addressed by the committee, by Officer Harkins and Assistant, I'm sorry, Sergeant Harkins and Assistant City Solicitor Buckley. There was some robust debate on, on the matter, and of note, the mayor spoke in support of the petition. There was a motion made by Counselor Turco, and that motion was as follows, which was to move to, number one, recognize and approve a speed limit of 20 miles per hour for all private ways within Stony Brook Condominium property as allowed under Massachusetts general law, section 90, section 18, paragraph 2. This includes Boulder Brook Drive, Evergreen Way, Oakleaf Way, Boulder Way, Treetop Way, and Blueberry Way. The recognition of the speed limit on the aforementioned private ways in no way constitutes an acceptance of the roads listed here. Number two, request the approval and signature of his honor, Mayor Edward Betancourt, of the special exemption adopted here today by the Peabody City Council. And number three, move to draft and advertise under section 19-47 of the City of Peabody Code of Ordinances governing motor vehicle speed limits, the following subsection C. Number one, speed limit on any way and or parking area within a private development known as Stony Brook Condominium shall be 20 miles per hour without limitation. The speed limit shall apply to Boulder, Boulder Brook Drive, Evergreen Way, Oakleaf Way, Boulder Way, Treetop Way, and Blueberry Way, see master deeds recorded at the Essex South District Registry of Deeds Book 010301, page 398, and declaration of trust recorded at said registry in book 010301, page 412. Number two, forthwith, upon the approval of this subsection C, the trustees of Stony Brook Condominium Trust and their designated agents shall purchase and install 20 mile per hour speed limit signs, the type, number, and locations of which shall be approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and the City of Peabody Police Department Traffic, Department Traffic Division. Number three, violations of speed limits shall be subject to the same fines and criminal, criminal penalties as applicable to violations of speed limits on public ways within the city of Peabody. Number four, the adoption of this ordinance does not constitute, does not constitute an acceptance by the city of the roads listed in, number one, as public ways within the meaning of Massachusetts general laws, section 90, and the authority, Massachusetts general law, section 90, subsection 18, second paragraph. That motion passed the committee unanimously, and make that motion now to the council as a whole. So moved.
You heard the motion, roll call, please.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Missouls.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Shearest.
Yes.
Motion carries, ten, eleven zero.
Thank you, Mr. President, that was our second and final matter. With that, we adjourn, and that completes the report.
Finance Committee, Counselor Gravel.
Thank you, Counselor President, the Finance Committee meeting was held this evening. Representing the Finance Committee were myself, as the chairman, Counselor Gould, Counselor Manning Martin, Counselor McGinn, and Counselor Turco. All other councils were present as well. There were three items on the agenda. The first item on the agenda was a transfer of funds, all of these represented transfers of funds. This was specific to the CPC funds. There was a request to transfer from account 27900033011, the amount of $10,000, which is the unreserved fund balance for Community Preservation Act, and to put that money into the same $10,000 into account number 27000033024, Community Preservation Act Administration. Motion was made unanimously approved, so moved.
Heard the motion, roll call.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Missouls.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Shearest.
Yes.
Motion carries, eleven zero.
Second item on the agenda, which was item B, was the transfer of funds from the receipts for the CPC, and of which there was $837,387 contributed by the city, $139,238 from the state as match, and interest income of $40,159, for a total of $1,016,784. By the statute and the act, the money has to be distributed to various funds within, within the CPC, so, an amount of $305,000, and $305,034 was requested to be transferred from 27000, 2700033011, which is the unreserved funds, to an amount of, to the following accounts, 2700033022, $101,678, 2700033023, amount of $101,678, and to account 2700033021, an amount of $101,678, which is the Open Space Reserve Fund. The committee also voted to set aside an additional 10% for the open space, which they do by, again, by rule, and that was a transfer from the unreserved balance, 27000033011, the amount of $152,518, and that was moved to 2700033021, which is the Open Space Reserve Fund, in the amount of $101,678, 2700033022, in the amount of $25,420, which is the Historic Preservation Reserve Fund, and to account 2700033023, in the amount of $25,420, which is the Community Housing Reserve Fund. Motion was made and accepted by the group unanimously, so moved.
You heard the motion, roll call.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Missouls.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Shearest.
Yes.
Motion carries, eleven zero.
Third item on the agenda was the distribution of some funds from the CPC to various activities, and the first was an amount of $230,109. After some debate, some discussion, it was determined that the motion to be made would be that this be moved to the next Finance Committee agenda, and that at that particular meeting, a member of the Historical Society, as well as the architect, come to represent the, there was some discussion on the windows, and the original windows, whether or not we put them in, but the differential would have been significant, about $87,000, so, fundamentally, the request is to continue this to that Finance Committee meeting, and have the architect, who was making the representation, as well as the, somebody from the Historical Society, to come in and provide proof that the, the windows that were being requested that are actually historically correct. That was the motion that was made and approved, so moved.
Counselor, do you need a roll call or not? If you're going to be continuing, you just need to be set, all right? Thank you.
All we need on that one is-
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
That is correct. So then, the next item on that request was that we provide some funds for the, or the CPC, move some funds for the center school playground reconstruction and upgrade project, repairs, et cetera. The amount of funds requested were coming from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Account 2700033021, in the amount of $32,314.82, and move that to the Community Preservation Act Center School Playground Upgrades Fund, which was going to be account number 270018115856220190379, in the amount of $32,314.82, so moved.
You heard the motion, roll call.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Missouls.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Turco. Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Shearest.
Yes.
Motion carries 11-0.
A final transfer request was being made to address the, a improvement for the Phase Two of the Independence Greenway Bike Way Extension, which is at Leahy Clinic to the downtown. The funding was requested to enable the completion of the 25% design phase in accordance with the Mass. DOD tip program, and project implementation was given to us, and there was some information about the location of the improvements and such that are being sought. The money was being transferred from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Fund, which is account number 2700033021, in the amount of $124,922.3, and it was being moved to the Community Preservation Act Independence Greenway Phase Two Fund, which is account number 270018115856220190380, in the amount of $124,922.3. So moved.
You heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors O'Neal.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Shearest.
Yes.
Motion carries 11-0.
Meeting was adjourned after that. Thank you.
Counselor. Motion orders and resolutions, Counselor O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to request Department of Public Services install a curb from the corner of 23 Antrim and Shannon Roads up to the crosswalk in the same area. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to add a handicap parking spot by advertising and amending Section 19-81, the ordinance of the City of PBD, to add Summer Street in front of and along of the property line of Sixth Summer Street. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Counselor Gould.
No motions, Mr. President.
Counselor Saslaw.
Thank you, Counselor President. Motion, move to request that the Department of Public Services install a speed limit sign at pole number 88 on Lake Street, and that's in the vicinity of 176 Lake Street. So move.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Yes, also like to make a motion and send this to the Municipal Safety Committee, that the police department weigh in regarding the request for a no-left turn at the corner of Johnson and Lowell Street, and that would be heading east. Once again, would like to weigh in on a no-left turn sign at the corner of Johnson and Lowell Street, and that they show up the next Municipal Safety Committee meeting. Thank you. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Mazzullis.
No motions. Thank you.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One motion, co-motion with Counselor McGinn of Ward Two regarding a resident complaint about access of emergency vehicles being obstructed on Shaw's Lane, Holton, and Fountain Street, and refer that to Public Municipal Safety Committee. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Heard the motions.
Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to accept Item 8A and thank Public Service for their quick response.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one motion. Move to have Public Services install a crosswalk at the top of Joyce Road where it intersects with Linfield Street to cross Linfield Street for those members of the public that would like to access the YMCA. Thank you.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to refer Item 7A to the Finance Committee.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions.
Counselor Gravel.
Thank you, Counselor President. Just a simple reminder, we're going to have a charter commission meeting next week. I'd encourage any counselor who has individuals who might inquire or want to be participate to please send that notification to the city clerk so that we can get their names on the list. Thank you.
I only had a couple of things. I'd like to ask the DPS to look at the sidewalks and repair on Hilltop Ave., or I believe it's Ave., most of them popping through the asphalt. If they can look at those and see when, as soon as they can get those repaired, I understand it's the end of the season for the asphalt work, but make that motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Just one matter that has been coming up quite a bit lately, and I'm asking for the help with the state reps and legislative, maybe Lovely's office and so, most of us probably be getting, I mean, you're getting these phone calls, and they're using local numbers. There's numbers that you think it's maybe your neighbor or a constituent, but in some cases, these are parents who have kids, and they, you know, they answer the phone right away, and it's a telemachter. They're utilizing people's phone numbers right here, and I'm not sure how they're getting away with it. I've talked to several communication companies, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and things like that, and they call them like a ghost number of some sort. But I'm going to ask our state reps and legislators if they can help us in somehow to prevent these people from using private numbers, and people who don't know that their numbers are being used. I've called back these numbers, and it's a regular citizen who has no idea that they, you know, a company is using their phone number. So I ask for the support of this council and the mayor and the legislative body here to try to do something to prevent them from doing this. And that is my motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. And I'd just like to add condolences to the Rupony family for their loss. You know, that's a great family here in the city. They've done a lot for us, and again, just from the city council, condolences. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Turco ahead. Dan, you're up.
Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Neglected to mention to the public and to my fellow councils, Tuesday, the 16th, at 6:30 PM at the South Memorial School Gymnasium, there will be a neighborhood meeting regarding the fine building, and discussed at that meeting would be several suggestions, or I will say proposals, that some of were brought forth to the city, some were brought forth to the Realtor, that the city doesn't own the property, and the mayor, through the discussion with the mayor, we thought this would be a good opportunity to actually discuss some of those proposals and see what the will of the vast majority of Ward One is. So a robocall with regard to that meeting went out to about probably 40% of Ward One. So all are welcome to discuss your thoughts on the building and the site. So thank you.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive Item 8B. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive Item 8C and refer to the Committee on Taxis and Limousines. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve Item 9A, Taxi and Limousine Driver's License, Kevin Parker, License Number 15. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve, all papers being in order, and a request, Item 9B, West Memorial School PTO, 15 Bow Street, and North Shore Medical Center, 81 Highland Avenue, Salem. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I think that's all, folks. No? Do we?
I think...
10A. Counselor Gould would like to pick that up? I'm calling Counselor Manning Martin.
I think that the, all that's left is for the city clerk to read it into the record. We already voted on it. It's kind of a second reading, if I recall. I haven't done one of these since 2009, so...
Well, then I don't feel bad. I haven't done one on.
It's moved to adopt at this point in time. It's been advertised.
She doesn't even need to read it into the record? Well, there you go.
Go on the experience here. Is there anything else I might have missed? Counselors? No?
No, you need to...